August, regularly scheduled school board meeting of the middle school district order at 6 o'clock. And we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now after a moment of silence, please. Alright, thank you very much. Moving to our agenda. Think for additions and changes. We have just a couple amendments. We just needed to add those to the list, correct?
Correct.
This will be under new business?
It'll be new business. Is that go underneath number C? Correct?
Approve the higher Angela Harms as high school para and then...
But I mean that'll be underneath C?
C, C?
CB?
Yes, oh, C.
So this will get tagged on along with CB. And Angela Harms. As high school para.
It'll be fifteen fifty.
At fifteen fifty. And, yep. High school para at fifteen fifty. Is that Merrily?
Marley?
Is it Marley?
Is it Merrily?
Merrily?
Okay.
No, we can approve them. Well, actually, yeah, that would be C. It'll be CC. Merrily Smith as volunteer. And then, I don't think we need to add those open enrollments. Because we don't have to approve them.
No. Out with our policy change.
Yep. So that'll be all the amendments to the agenda, just those two.
While we're on...
Merrily Smith.
Merrily Smith as a volunteer.
While you're on CB, I forgot the wage. Steven Simpson is forty-nine thousand one hundred. And Pam is forty-eight thousand seven.
Forty-eight seven for Pam. And what was Steve?
Forty-nine one.
Okay. Any further amendments or changes or additions? Seeing not four.
Move to approve the agenda as modified.
Motion's been made by Todd and seconded by? Dean. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Moving to conflict of interest. I don't think we have any this evening. But I realized when I looked through it. Um, so we'll move on to our consent agenda. Your approvals altogether or individually, however you choose.
I move to approve the consent agendas altogether.
Motion's been made by Kristen, seconded by Katie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Moving to our reports. We'll start with the business manager.
So I went to the new business training again last month. When I had a year ago, I'd only been here a week, so. Mostly do again, I started to learn more of the things. I started learning about the service stuff. That I need to... Well, studying every topic. Some of the stuff that we got money years ago that's been sitting there, we're supposed to spend it certain ways, are just things I didn't know about. So. Learning new things every day. Um, working on annual reports. And ready to not be alone over here. So staff and kids are coming back. It'll be exciting.
Alright, thank you very much. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to our K principal.
It looks like we have all our positions filled. Teachers are set to return tomorrow. You, you as school board, are welcome to join us in the morning. Welcome to our teachers' path if you are available. We just have a lot of trainings and different things set up this week. And trying to give them as much time as we can to work in their classroom, prepare. Mrs. Stockard, our mentor has been here the last couple of weeks with all our new teachers and most of today. Just helping them with a lot of odds and ends and how to get started. And our open house is next Thursday that you guys are all welcome to also.
Alright, thank you very much. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to our high school principal and superintendent.
Alright, on the sped side of things, indicator eleven on the initial evaluation that were completed in twenty-two, four, twenty-five school year were submitted to the state. Training for the ninety-five percent curriculum for MTSS. All the new staff attended. Training for science or reading was attended by all new staff as well. There will be training for the paraprofessionals during in-service. That has been arranged. I'd like to start out by thanking volunteers, custodians, booster club, all that help us prepare for this coming school year. We had rooms painted. We had a lot of work done on the grounds. And I really appreciate all their help in going forward with that. I went to superintendent conference three weeks ago at the SDUSA. That's the small school group that we have that you pay membership for. The one thing they emphasize is to prepare for another voucher bill this coming year for schools. Kristen Bonefield and I attended the Associated School Board's School Administrators of South Dakota Conference. We just got back last, we were on Wednesday through Friday. Kristen, do you want to say anything about the conference?
It was good. There was, it was... There was a lot of really good information, really helpful information. I think that we can start implementing into some of our schools to make some improvements and so I hope to start getting that implemented. Having some discussions with you guys about that.
Yeah, we, we, we went to some school law sessions, mental health sessions, school safety sessions and so forth that we can work with our staff more and implement new stuff for our kids. The free and reduced, we have a door prize for everyone that signs up. That drawing will be on August twenty-fifth, so whether you qualify or not, if you please sign, fill it out, that'd be great. Student registration started today and we'll run through tomorrow. We have our in-service schedule set up. Tomorrow we'll have our district meeting in the morning. In the afternoon, we'll start working on training for fast bridge assessments. We're gonna go K-12 with progress monitoring of our students. And Wednesday, the six through twelve staff are going to be doing non-verbal CPI training. On Thursday, we'll be working with Bobby Mahar on our CNN and we'll be having our team meeting to work on our procedures during that day. And our fall sports are starting up and we're gonna start school on the eighteenth, so I'm pretty excited to see the kids. So, staff, thank you. If you have any questions.
Perfect. Thank you very much. To information and discussion, item A, first reading of policy BDDH, public participation at board meetings. BDDHE one, public participation at board meeting, school board meeting speaker sign-in sheet. And then BDDH dash E two.
I move to approve the first reading of the policy as stated.
Motion to approve the first reading by Kristen, seconded by Katie. Is there any discussion on that?
What is the policy?
Um, so there has been a law that was passed recently that requires... It's just, it's the open forum policy, pretty much.
Cause I couldn't find it on the SharePoint.
Yeah, it's under policies. New policy handbook recommendations and it says August first reading.
This is first reading, so why are we approving this at this point?
We're just approving the first reading.
Okay.
That we approve that we bring it forward.
Okay.
There's some part of, one of the changes is the, there's a law that requires every school to, which we'll get to later in the session. Every year, we have to review the conducting the public's business, or conducting the, yeah, public's business in public brochure. Found on the Attorney General's website.
I found this in the emails, but I didn't find the verbiage of the policy.
I think the verbiage of the policy is just on the SharePoint.
Okay. Well, I have, actually, I didn't say it was under the policy.
Yeah, it's just the updated recommendations from Associated School Boards on public forum. And one of, and then it says part one and part two. One of them is a signup sheet and the other one is something that you display next to the signup sheet that gives a clear instruction on public forum for the public.
Yeah, it's, and, I mean, really, it's all verbiage from Associated School Boards of South Dakota. No, not today.
Right.
But, yeah, this is just the first reading. I'm just explaining what we changed. Which was including, there's a paragraph in there that specifies that on a yearly basis, we'll review this. Yeah, because that's part of the new law. I think that was passed two months ago, three months ago.
Yeah, these all, you see a lot of policy recommendations come from Associated School Boards in June because they set them up to follow the legislative session that just occurred in the spring.
Did anybody else have any thoughts or questions on the proposed policy? Alright. Seeing none, we'll move on to information discussion. Item B, first reading of policy BD, school board meetings.
I move to approve the first reading of policy as stated.
Motion's been made by Kristen, seconded by Katie for the first reading. Is there any discussion?
Can you give me an overview of what this one is too? Cause none of these policies I even found, so.
Okay, this one is...
Just a quick.
Yeah, in this one, we're actually going to, it's the new law, the review of South Dakota open meetings laws. And you got that handout that's in front of you.
And I did see that. I did see the handout on, on.
Okay.
I did too, but I did not see the policies like Todd said. But Todd's a special.
Well, I was just waiting because they were looking, looking it over down there, so I just wanted to make sure that in case they had something that came to mind.
No problem. A lot of it's kind of intertwined with each other, to be honest.
Unfortunately, a lot of, a lot of policies are that way.
Anybody have any questions or thoughts? Alright, seeing none, we'll move on to information discussion. Item C, first reading of policy IGBA, special education and related services.
This one, the addition in this one has to do with military students and having their records transferred within sixty days. It's just a recommended update from Associated School Boards to follow law, the South Dakota codified law, but we failed and see this in our school district.
I move to approve the first reading of the policy IGBA as approved.
Motion by Kristen, seconded by Katie. Is there any further thoughts, discussion?
It's just, yeah, just like what Pam was saying, it just includes this paragraph about a child of armed forces, forces, active duty members. Gives them a little bit, a little bit of different plans associated with. Anybody about that?
Alright, we'll move on then to open forum.
You got an email about EA and signing up for that? What, what is that? For the life of me, I tried to figure out what EA stood for, educated, educate, I don't know. And it gave us three emails because it also gave us a code. You didn't get it?
You didn't do it, did you?
I didn't do it. No, I did not do it.
I probably wouldn't do it.
Okay. No, I didn't even, I didn't even open them. I just looked at the subject line and then, but the one, the last one that they sent, and they all came within two hours. The last one was, here is your confirmation code that you need to put in.
Interesting.
Just like, just like a bank would do.
Yeah. No, I would probably spam. Cause anytime, like, anytime I get one that needs a signature, whatever, Amy normally calls me and tells me there's gonna be something coming, or I guess I think Pandy did one time too. Somebody calls and lets me know something's coming that needs signed and whatnot. And they also give me the timeframe and looking to do it, so.
But the acronym was EA and I had no idea what it was, so I didn't do it.
Interesting. Fair enough. Um, moving to open forum. I was gonna say, there wasn't anybody on the list, so I just wanted to make sure nobody jumped on it. Alright, so there's nothing for open forum, so I'm not gonna bore you with my speech. Um, moving to old business, which we have none of to tend to this evening, so we'll get right on to new business. Which is to open bids for fuel, propane and beef.
You even bring a letter?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's pretty fancy, but it's yellow.
Well, I got it from the business office years ago because...
This is no South Dakota. If you would've pulled out your knife and opened it, it wouldn't have been that bad.
So when I first got on the board and did that, somebody told me that they found it inappropriate. And I think they were joking, but.
I guess I'm inappropriate all the time.
I, I am, I am as well, but probably for the best now, beans, I'm on TV. I guess it doesn't matter. So we'll go with the fuel. Both of these, ones for fuel and ones for propane only came from Olson's. Both of them are from Olson's. Let's see, bid for diesel and gasoline will be based on the daily posted price at Olson Fuels LLC. At the time of delivery, the price per gallon to the middle school district will be daily posted at, daily posted price at Olson Fuels, less ten cents per gallon. And that's for number one, number two, and unleaded. So, and I guess this is probably the eleventh price, but so on the eleventh, number two diesel is three forty-nine. So the price to us would be three thirty-nine, gasoline would, I mean, the same.
In the bid process, did we ask for a bid on P forty? In place of number one?
I don't think we did. Probably not. I don't even know if a couple of years ago, we ended up.
And, and so I, I talked to them about the ranch.
Yep.
And I said, is this, is this legit? He said, absolutely. And I did it, I've done it for the last two years. And it, it's significantly cheaper than number one and it don't gel.
Yeah.
And better fuel mileage and better power.
But you can't mix it.
You can't mix it with number two.
Yeah, so if you're done with it, you're not sure it's either empty or it kind of wastes it. It separates.
Oh, really?
When you say you can't mix it.
Well, could you mix it when it was warm enough out though?
No, it still separates out. It has to be stirred.
Oh, I see.
So if there's a quarter of a tank left in the bus, we gotta basically drain it or?
No, it's, it's fine. It's just like you wouldn't want to, uh...
If you had a half a tank and have number two in it, you wouldn't want to put it in, I assume, if you're covered.
Yeah, so I mean, if it was warm enough, like springtime and it was warm enough, it wouldn't be a problem, yeah.
It'll burn, it's just you don't mix it in the tank, cause it doesn't mix. I've never had anything gel up on it either. And it's significantly cheaper.
Yeah. Well, I mean, the fact of the matter is...
It's one, it's one bid, just talk to them.
I would assume we'd be able to ask for it, but.
I mean, we can put bids out whenever we want, can't we?
We actually have a bus that's young enough to have it. The newest one, does it? Okay. Well, I just didn't, I thought all of our buses were antique. I move to approve.
Do we want to go through the?
They read the other one and then?
Yeah, we'll do, we'll, that way we've made it one motion, beans are the only two. Um, so price of propane, September twelfth through June thirtieth is one twenty-five per gallon. I would say that's extremely comparable, because I just had mine filled here in the last month and it was like one twenty-three or something like that. Actually, it might've been one thirty. But those are the only bids we have.
I, I move, I move to approve the bids as presented, but also ask for a bid on P forty.
Motion's been...
I recall it, because he did, I don't know, he said he could make it if he had questions, he would be happy to answer.
I asked him those questions a year ago too.
Well, I'm pretty... I highly doubt that we wouldn't be able to have it delivered instead of in lieu of number one.
In lieu of number one.
I would think, even with the bid being for number one.
Oh, I don't know if they have these, they, that might be, that may be a hangup. They may not have clear, clear diesel.
Can we just have another bid for that specific gas?
I would probably just call and bid it with him about it, because if it's only for non-taxable use, then it does us no good.
Yeah, cause if they tell you it's for non-taxable use only, then they can all enjoy it.
Motion's been made by Dean and seconded by Todd.
Are we, I thought we would've been exempt for fuel tax anyway, because we're a school district.
But we can't burn red.
Yeah.
So how does, how does the exempt for fuel tax go for a city, for a school district? Do you pay the regular price to the district, or to the fuel supplier and then you get credited back?
I believe we get credited on the clear, but as a city, we use red on... There are certain pieces of equipment you can use red on, because a loader isn't a highway vehicle.
You know it's on the highway.
Even though it's possible on the highway, we use red in all the places. I mean, there's...
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Um, moving on to new business, item B, approve Dominic Santiago Activities Director as official signer of trust and agency checking account.
I move to approve Dominic Santiago as the activities director, as the official signer of the trust and agency checking account.
Motion's been made by Kristen, seconded by Katie. Is there any discussion? Yep. Alright, seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Um, one hindsight thought, for those bids, even though we didn't get one for beef, it would probably be good to touch base with Walt to make sure that they are still gonna supply. Just as a safety precaution. They have in the past, even when they didn't provide a bid, but I would hate to find out the hard way. Yeah. Um, moving to item C, approve administration recommendations for personnel. Resignation of Sunny Pacisca in the kindergarten. Um, approve new hire Steven Simpson, middle school teacher at forty-nine thousand one hundred. Pam Riesland, kindergarten, forty-eight thousand seven hundred. Amanda Shirley, middle school student council, two hundred and fifty. High school student council, two hundred and fifty, and yearbook, twelve hundred. Rhonda Miller, part-time kitchen assistant at fifteen fifty an hour. Angela Harms, high school para at fifteen fifty. And C, Merrily Smith as a volunteer.
I move to approve the administration recommendations for personnel as stated.
Motion's been made by Kristen, seconded by Katie. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Um, new business, item D, approve technology handbook for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
I move to approve the technology handbook for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year.
Motion's been made by Kristen, seconded by Katie. Is there any discussion?
It's loaded now, right?
Yeah, it's the same handbook, just different year.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. New business, item E, approve recommended changes to policy EEA, student transportation services.
I move to approve the recommended changes to policy EEA.
Motion's been made by Kristen, seconded by Katie. Is there any discussion?
What were those changes?
So we just are changing the verbiage from bus to transportation to accommodate the north route. That is it. Everything, the entirety, that's it. Just, what is it, like two words, I think?
Yeah. Just as we talked.
That's why we're not going to the first and second. That's why we're not going through the first and second reading, just straight to the approval, cause it's very slow.
Alright, any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Um, new business, item F, review of South Dakota open meeting laws. Don't think this will require any action.
Any questions on it?
It is. So, I, I anticipate to this being included in our, like, beginning of each fiscal year meeting, moving forward as well. Yes, unless they change the law again, but that's the...
Yeah, either July or, or August, I would say.
Yeah, depending on how long we want our July meetings to be. As long as it doesn't get forgotten. And there's a copy of this brochure on the Attorney General's website.
Could throw it up with our minutes as well. That way there's no questions after whether or not we...
Did anybody have any questions on that? Or thoughts? Epiphanies? Enlightenments?
We can all read a paragraph next July, make the meeting last as long as possible.
Of course. Well, moving to new business, item G. Designate the official newspaper as the Black Hills Pioneer.
I move to approve, to approve, to designate the official newspaper as the Black Hills Pioneer.
Motion's been made by Kristen, seconded by Katie. Is there any discussion?
So now we're going back to where we were.
Yes.
The beacons.
And I know why.
Yeah, maybe not. There was a little blurb in there, that there might be a new light, so...
Yeah, maybe next year, I could talk to the, because, maybe by next year.
Yeah.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, proceed to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Um, new business, item H, transportation routes. Same transportation routes as the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
I move to approve the transportation routes, as stated.
Motion's been made by Kristen, seconded by Katie. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, proceed to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Um, new business, item I, authorize business manager Amy Williams to open and maintain a business money marketing account at First National Bank for the purposes of investing fund balances.
I move to authorize the business manager to open a business money marketing account at First National Bank.
Motion's been made by Kristen, seconded by Katie. Is there any discussion?
I, yes. I guess I'd like to know, well, typically when they say business money, money market account, that's an investment account, but that's risk.
Um...
Yeah.
You can't do that with, well, you can't do that with taxpayer funds. You can put it in a money market account that has a higher interest rate, as long as...
I'll clarify, cause I asked her if we can, like, do a savings, right now we get two point seven percent on our checking account, and I said, could we move that to something that's more? So I can clarify. She said it's totally different from a market account, that's like a savings, you have three point seven five.
But there's no risk to the money?
No.
Okay.
Three point seven, it's just a little higher percent. So yes, the risk, there is a company called SD BIC that does have more risk than, have the policy approved, so I thought it might be a starting point.
Well, I don't, I don't, I, if there's risk with money market account, I don't think we can legally do it.
No, I would clarify, but I believe it's just straight, just...
As long as it's just, that you can only deduct so many times per month.
Yep.
I'm familiar with what, what she's describing, and I'm fine, I'm fine with that, as, as long as it's not a money market account. So, if you clarify that.
Yeah, I'll make sure, cause I did look at the policy, funds not in use will be invested in savings accounts, kind of deposits, and bonds, or securities.
Which all of those are secure, fu, fu, funding.
I'll just make sure that we're, just trying to make a little better interest on the money, we're not...
Yeah.
I would, I would support that, as long as that's what it is.
Um, me as well, yeah. Do, do we want to table that until the next month, until we have that clarification?
I, I, I would just put it in the, the motion that it's, it's secure.
I think I would feel a little bit more comfortable with that, like, a hundred percent, there's zero risk involved.
Usually a money market account just has, you have to make a, a higher balance in it, and less transactions.
Correct.
Yeah, I don't.
But they said, it has the word market in, in this, a money, th, th, there's, there's, there's two, cause I have both.
Right, but I don't think you're investing in different funds, no.
Might just be the way First National phrases it, if it's a local account, but...
If they are saying, like, you're investing in a bank.
So, all your additional funds that are left, like, in the checking account, you move over to there, but is there then a penalty for, like, if you have to move it back?
No, she said there's six transferred month, uh, kind of two.
You just transfer larger amounts back.
Is that, is six enough?
Yeah, there's two payrolls that will be, four bills and payroll are the only time you need to move it back, to cover the five per week.
As long as you don't transfer, okay, you need twenty bucks, so you, so you transfer two thousand back instead of twenty.
Right.
So you don't go over the six.
It's pretty standard, or, I would say, we'll try not to let school, that wants to have an investment account.
Yeah.
Okay.
Some have several, like, two hundred, two hundred, money might usually have, like, a million, five thousand.
Alright, any further discussion? Thoughts, Todd?
I'm just wondering, like, hearing all of this, and not being overly familiar, I want to kind of ring down Kristen's side for your statement of maybe we ought to table it until it is definitive, that it's not at risk. I mean, I listened to Katie saying it's not, I don't know the verbiage, Dean has an account, and if there is risk, I mean, they, they... And our motion doesn't include that if there is risk, it's a no, if it's a straight interest-bearing account, it's safe, it's a yes. So either, I guess my thoughts are either...
Amended or, or table.
Amend the motion or table it till we have definitive information. I mean, we haven't had one for years, another month without interest, I hope, isn't the straw.
Yeah. How about, I, I do agree with you, Todd, in the, but in the sake of moving forward with it, and not burning it another thirty days, let's just amend, amend said motion.
I move to amend the motion by confirming that it is a zero-risk market account, or money account.
Amendment has been made to the motion on the table. Is there a second? Mo, amendment's been made by Dean and seconded by Todd. Is there any discussion on said amendment? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote on the amendment. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Amendment carries.
Give me just one second here, so I write this amendment down.
What's that?
You were spent it.
Yeah, that's what I'm just... Zero risk. Can't really say the interest-bearing, I think, but...
Alright, so that would make the motion on the table to approve Amy to open and maintain a business money market account at First National for the purpose of investing fund own, fund balances, if it's a zero-risk account, basically. That way we stay inside all bounds. Very simple, probably not rooted, right, but it'll work. Any discussion on the main motion as it stands now? Well, alright, proceed to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. New business, item J, approval to void outstanding general fund checks dated from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three.
I move to approve, I move to approve the, to avoid the outstanding general fund checks dated from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three. Why can't I get that out of my mouth?
Motion's been made by Kristen and seconded by Katie. Is there any discussion?
Yes. So the sheets in our pocket, the check, check reconciliation report, is that what a lot of these are, is that what we're?
All these are just gonna sit in here.
Cause I, I got one that's stapled together, and our date range does not cover that.
No.
We got some outstanding, if I read this right, from two thousand eight?
Yeah, okay, so, we can amend that, this is trust and agency.
Okay.
And this one's general. And we can write that in, cause I didn't even think about that, but we could, I mean, or we could...
Trust and agency is different, though.
So these are checks that we wrote, that haven't been cleared?
Yeah, we write all these, you're seventeen here.
These two?
But wait, if, if they come out of the trust and agen, okay, so do we know what trust and agency accounts it came out of?
Outstanding checks. I mean, I think that's a lot of time.
I know. Is it worth it for eight dollars and ninety-seven cents?
Are you severing?
Five hundred and ninety-eight.
Well, some of them, yeah, no.
My honest guess is about half of those are out in the trust account, but probably the general's not paid back anyway. Be quite honest.
I think we probably have to handle that one differently, though, since it is trust and agency.
I mean, I think, once you void it, that amount just goes back to that account, like, if this was FFA, it could literally just go straight back, like, I don't have to do any... We go back to that.
It should go back to that fund, but a lot of these funds I'm looking at are probably...
Oh, like?
Non-existent?
Yeah, the...
Well, not only, but not only that.
Like which one?
A che, a check that's wrote, that's over six months old is void anyway.
But technically, I need more motions to void them in my software.
Which one, which accounts are you thinking are non-existent here?
Uh, well, I don't know, they're all, all these checks were to a person. For, um, National Alliance for Mental Illness in June of two thousand thirteen for twenty-five dollars.
But that's in the trust of a...
Yeah, well, then that's the, that, these are the ones that we think are gone, so we don't know.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
It, it was a, whatever trust and agency fund it was in in two thousand thirteen, cause we've been trying to proactively close them.
Yes.
Remember, we were like twenty years behind on that?
Yeah.
But there's some in the open, in the general account, too, that, uh, Fiduciary Trust Company of New Hampshire, several times, for, for twenty-five and fourteen dollars, back in twenty-two, Horace Mann Life Insurance.
Well, that's general fund, that's, that's a different.
Oh, just because the general fund ones are probably a rep, or like, payroll, so, my guess is, they were taking care of somehow, because... That person would have asked. I don't, I don't know, I could go back a little, but it would be easier at this.
They're over six months old, I, I move to void them, the general account for now, and then we'll talk about that one.
Trying to clean up those.
Yeah, every one of these is over six months old, so...
Well, and the, the motion is just for general fund checks, so...
Right, we'll do that, I'll work with the others, cause I think we should put it just in that.
I think it'd be good to make sure we do it right.
But even if it's back to a, to an account that's no longer existent, they would contact said account holder, which would be the school.
Yeah.
But then, divying that up, where we can put it.
Well, not sure the checking, if it was covered by general fund, I mean, you know how it works. We write the check, and then this is supposed to come back to us, but it never cleared, so it never did.
Yeah.
It may well just need to go straight to general fund anyway.
There's only seven of them on here, on the TNA.
Yeah.
That could even be cashed or deposited.
Yeah, that are newer than six months.
That are new enough to be...
Yeah. Alright, any further discussion? Seeing none, proceed to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Board will now entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I move to move to executive session, SDCL one dash one five dash two one.
Motion's been made by Katie and seconded by Amber. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Board will enter into exec at six forty-seven.